Four dollars to take a picture. Three dollars for you in the back.
He's a bit of a bear and it's 40.
Dick, if you could take a seat now? He's not listening to me. Hello, everybody. That's okay. I'd like to say good evening and welcome to the Brookbridge Town Hall meeting. This is your meeting. We have one topic tonight, and that is for the renovation of our front sign. And I just want to give you a short history of how we came to this point in time. A year ago, Ray Starr, our most senior director, was approached by a few residents who were interested in updating our sign. They met a few times, and then Ray invited me to listen to the residents. At that time, I explained that there was no line either for the sign in the operating budget, and that the reserve budget had about $5,000 for renovations. At that time, we had a discussion about ways to fund a possible complete renovation. Ray and I asked those residents to investigate the logistics of a renovation. This included speaking with architects who could give a quote, and who could work with the county, as this is county property. The residents contacted me in the fall with enough information to review. From there, the beautification committee was assigned to confirm the information. When it became evident this project was too involved for the beautification committee, Linda Smith asked to take this on. Now, for full disclosure, I know some of our residents are saying that this is my project because I don't like the blue sign. Well, you are correct, but only about the color. Personally, I don't like the blue. But I didn't even think about color or design until the photos were presented to me. That was only my opinion, and we're all entitled to that. Also, as a resident, I strongly feel the existing sign does not reflect Brookbridge, but that again is only my opinion. That said, we're here tonight to welcome all of our opinions. This is only the first meeting that we will have. The Board of Directors value everyone's input because we can't think of everything. We are all here to learn together. This venue allows speakers more than the three minutes that we have at board meetings. And before I turn the discussion over to Linda, there are a few housekeeping items to consider. Number one, all discussion must pertain to the sign. We ask that there be no discussion about the county, and this is only because this is on county property, and the architect has already had a discussion with the county and knows what his parameters are. Three, we are here to welcome all opinions and concerns. Tell us what you think: yes, no, or in between. Number four, we ask for proper decorum. This is nothing more than the exercising of common courtesy and maintaining respect for the rights of others. And with that, again, the bathrooms are out the door and to the left down the hallway. And if everyone could please silence their cellphones. This is only for about an hour, and it would be nice if... I have to shut mine off, too. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Linda. Thank you.
Good evening, and thanks for coming. I would like to recognize my ad hoc committee. Jackie McCabe has volunteered. Tom Wellington has volunteered. And Gary Thomas has volunteered. We're also still looking for a couple more volunteers to be on the ad hoc committee, so if anybody's interested, I would love to have you join our committee. We know that there are a few people who feel that we don't need to renovate the current sign into the 21st century. But a lot of people are in favor of renovating the sign. I'd like to give you a little bit of information. The sign tells people what type of community they are coming into, whether it's just to visit, or whether it's to buy. How many of you have had visitors come and say, "Wow, I didn't know that this was this nice"? I know I have. Let me tell you about my experiences with estate sailing. We go every Friday, we go anywhere from the villages north to St. Pete and Clearwater to the south, and all areas in between. The signs that we see as we go into a community tells us right away what type of community that we're going into. We really feel that updating our sign and front entrance will add value to all of our homes. We may not be going to sell right now, but eventually, if you want to sell, it just it makes sense to have more value to our homes. Our vision is to renovate the sign and have a professional landscaper to update around the sign. Then our wonderful beautification committee can maintain the grounds around the sign. Please don't let the cost influence your decision to donate. We already have $520 donated to date. We'll have some fundraisers, as well as we want to seek some donations from a lot of the vendors that do a lot of business with Brookbridge. We've got 2,800 homes in here, and we shop at Walmart, we shop at Publix, we have air conditioning people come in, we have concrete people come in, so we're going to seek donations from some of the vendors. If every home in Brookbridge would donate just $20, we would have enough for the sign and the landscaping. Remember, no money will come from the budget. We're going to have some thermometers placed around. We'll have one at the admin building, we'll have one here at the clubhouse, and we're going to have one out by the pool that will show the progress of the donations. We also want to have a recognition board that will show who donated. It won't show how much they donated, but just their name, just to give recognition to the people and the vendors who donated to our sign. The county is on board with the renovation because it is on county land. We can only renovate the sign. Because it's on county land, we cannot take it down to the ground. O'Hurst signs will do the renovation, and will take care of all and any permits. If we raise enough money to do the sign without the roof, we will have to get a demolition company to remove the roof. The cost of that is still to be determined. The fact that we will have to have the sheriff come and do traffic control, and because I'm sure we'll have to have some sort of piece of heavy equipment that will take the roof off, so if we do go with that, that cost, they estimate anywhere from maybe $2,000 to $10,000, depending on what they run into, as they have to take the roof off. Please keep an open mind and know that we are just trying to bring Brookbridge into the 21st century and add value to all of our homes. Of the three signs that we have up front, which one would you like to see represent Brookbridge, your community? We have our original sign. We have the sign that still has the roof on it, and then the one with the roof off. How many people, can I have a showing of hands, would like to just keep the sign the way it is? Okay. Okay, the people, can I see a showing of hands for the second one with the roof on it? Okay, thank you. And the third sign? Okay, thank you. Now, if I haven't forgot anything, we would like to open it up for your comments, questions, and concerns. Thank you.
This is the part where we really want your input, whether, no matter which sign you want, we really want your input. This is just the beginning, we'll be doing this over the months, we will have a second one, but for us to go forward with whichever design you do, we really want to hear what people have to say, not that you want something else or not, but we really would like to hear why. So, what we'd like to do is if you raise your hand, and I will come, or somebody will come with a mic? If you could just state your name and your unit number? Beverly Evans. Unit six. I was so pleased to see all the hands being raised for the second and third sign, all in favor of either one. I'd like to see very much to have it modernized. Thank you.
Larry Schrattin, unit four. I'm a firm believer in getting at least three bids on every project for my own personal home. How many bids have been put in for this? Just two, or?
No, they're actually, when the residents looked in, and they spoke to six, to six contractors. There were three that were interested until they spoke to the county. The county gave them such a hard time because when this was first built, we couldn't, they couldn't find any records. It was built on a handshake. If anybody's been around since Sasso's been here, that's how a lot of things were done back in the day. The county is very specific as to what can go there and what can be done, that none of the other architects would take on the project. This was the only architect that would take on the project, and there were six that were asked. So, this is, it's not... When we, when we, as Brookbridge, when we have monies from our budget, we have, you know, I don't know how we would, how we would proceed forward with something like this, but where it's, it'll be totally donations, we couldn't get anybody else to, we couldn't get one other person to talk to us. But they all spoke with the county first.
Okay, you hear the architect drawings, but how about contractors to do the actual work?
I'm sorry, it is the contractor. He designed it, and yes, it is the contractor, yes. And that contractor has had many meetings with the county when we discovered that, when these residents came forward, and they actually had asked somebody else to do it first, there was two other ones that they had talked to, and they wouldn't get involved with the county. And this one was willing to do that.
Good evening, Rich Stratton, unit three. Being here a while since '78, sign, the first sign is there is nostalgia, that's beside the point. We all go back to nostalgia, we all feel the old days, the new days, we change around. Looking at sign two and three, I'm driving my car on Barkley, and a new person, and on Barkley facing into Brookbridge, I can't see a sign. The sign, it has two sides down here. Signs have four sides. Even if it's only an inch, I don't care, it has four sides. So, the main sign coming from Barkley, you can't see. What do you do? You're hanging with a car, you're a vehicle, you go left or right. Now, I'm confused, on the main highway, for a sign you can't see. You can't see the sign. Well, that's, that's what's happening. So, if you come off of Barkley, you cannot see the sign.
I guess I'm not following you.
Barkley. Coming in Barkley. You drive on Barkley, gas station's here, RV place is here, you can't see the sign. Yes, signs are four-sided.
I can explain. It's, it's going to be the same width, it'll be the same width. It's going to be the same width.
I don't understand it, but if we're changing it to make it beautiful, we can't see it built.
Why?
There's no name on it.
Rich, you can, that can be an issue with some people, and I, and I take, I take all the opinions. This, this sign isn't going to be any less than this sign. Right now, this sign doesn't have anything there either.
This cost me nothing. This cost me $50,000. Am I right?
No, you don't cost you $50,000.
It cost them. Brookbridge, $50,000, what did it cost?
Not, not Brookbridge, not Brookbridge operating, but not the BCPA, not the operating budget.
It's all donation, then.
All donations.
Everybody's only say $20 bucks. I'm just an example. Those $20 bucks are in everybody's pocket. Another point is here also, number three. If you're coming from consult homes, you want to look in, you can't, there's trees in front of it. There's trees on the property where the liquor store's at. You can't see a sign properly. Sign should be available at 100% to see a sign, that's number four. To see a sign, you have to see it, not 20%, 10 or 12, the whole sign.
Okay, I have a question then. Can you see this sign when you're coming from the trees? When you go. Okay, so it doesn't, I, I see what you're saying. But those are obstacles that we've already always had, and those are obstacles that we have to deal with because the way that, that's county property, we can't, we can't turn the sign around. So, I mean, it's... But do we, do we not move, but, but I'm just, I'm just trying to...
21st century is what it is, we should be advanced. We should be advanced, we need to, like computers, everything, predict things happen, three-dimensional. Maybe there should be a system there with the, we could put a screen up in there that showed the dimensions with the name.
Are you suggesting the name Brookbridge on the sign, too? Well, that's something that they can, that's, that's something that they can look at. And this is where we get more information, would you, I'm gonna, I'm gonna write that down, that a suggestion is to, if we have one of these signs, to put Brookbridge on that, because if, it's about this Y, I would imagine, right? It's the same width. It's about this Y. So, we would actually solve a problem that we've always had. Okay? That's awesome, thank you.
Make it easy for the people.
Thank you, that's an awesome suggestion. Thank you. Okay, I saw it, hands up. Please, people, this is your time. You want to brag about it, you want to say this is no good? Come on, I'd like to hear someone get up there. I'm gonna make you earn those donations.
Okay, I just want to, oh, Val Stratton, unit three. I want to make a point about the mansard roof. So, our community buildings have the mansard roof, so I would lean towards the mansard roof design. I do like the idea of changing the color. If we stick with the mansard roof, we don't have to change our stationery, our other buildings, so it has its good points there, too.
Thank you. Now, there, there is a vision, if, no matter which one, that, that is, if one of these two signs are chosen, we would like to see, and this is, this is not the board, this is, the employees would like to see the colors be changed at all of the buildings. So, I mean, it would be, it would be consistent at all of the buildings. So, even if we ended up with this one, we would still, the color blue would go away, and the buildings will be painted. So, that's...
I'm one of those people who always wants to know what the price is. It's Lyle Hardy, unit three. Have you, have any questions?
Yep, we certainly do. Your question is, what is the price, the cost?
This one is a little over $26,000. This one is $40,000 plus whatever it costs to take the roof off. So, that could be anywhere from, like we said, anywhere from $2,000 to $10,000, whatever it costs to, to remove the roof. That we don't know, they don't know until they get into the project.
They said the highest it would be, would be $10,000, just so we have some kind of a point to go to. And also, along with, if we, if we chose one of those, if there is enough funds, my, our vision is to have a professional landscaper come in, that probably costs about $4,000, $5,000, and then we would have enough money also for, for the rest of the buildings to do that. So, you know, we really would like to spruce up Brookbridge a little bit.
Hi, I'm Nora Reichen, unit three, and we've lived here for over 20 years, and that first sign, that is to us, Brookbridge. So, we're going with the second sign because it's leaving the original structure there, costing us less money and looking wonderful.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, I got one over here, can you help?
Has any thought been given to color? Unit six.
Name?
Hope Perry Thomas, unit seven.
Yeah, we're, we're going with the, with the neutral colors, yes. Yes.
I would just like to, Jackie McCabe, six, I think. I would just like to say, I've been to a lot of meetings lately that have nothing to do in here, and some in here, too, and I heard a lot of people talking about, "Oh, I don't want anything to do with the sign, blah, blah, blah." I listened to all of their complaints, and I am tired. I was at a meeting the other day, and they appointed a committee for me, and they, I said, "Well, I'll have you guys come to my house, and we have a meeting at my house, and set this up, and ready to live, I'll live in Brookbridge." But that's a trailer park. And I said, "Oh, no, it isn't, and I want every one of you to come in your own car, and you're going to get a tour." Because this is not a trailer park, and I'm very proud that I live here, and I want to have a sign that is even prouder than what I am of all of this. And I think that we all need to back off.
Erin Overhold, unit six. I mean, I particularly like the last one up there because it's so different, and it's so rich looking, and branded, and it's expensive, but it looks, yeah, very classic. And my brother came down visiting Ohio, and he came right in on Mariah, and he could not get over, he said, "I had no idea, I thought you lived in a trailer park." And I've sent pictures of things, but until you come into the park, you don't realize how cool it is, but I think having a sign like that out front is going to just shoot everybody's, they're not going to think that anymore, they're going to think, "Wow, is that cool?"
Thank you.
Dick Terriano, I don't know my head, number... Number one, none of this, somebody just said what it's going to cost us, none of this is going to cost us. It's going to cost you $20, $25, $50, so it's going to be donations, so it's not coming out of our budget, maybe $20 in our pocket. Number one, I agree with you on the sign coming in, you know, to have a nice view, but I will say that if we take a trip up and down 19, or wherever we go, and we go into 90 places like this, I bet you I don't see one sign until I'm alongside left or right. So, the majority of the signs are for us, our visitors, prospective homebuyers, you know, a prospective homebuyer comes walking or driving in here, they're going to drive by that. I don't think there's too many that are going to see it on either end of this sign, but still a good idea.
Thank you.
Paula Snyder, unit four. And I just wanted to say, I don't like the blue either. I've never liked the blue, and I would be so happy to see the blue go on the roofs and every place in here. I think it will just be such a phenomenal upgrade, and whichever of the other two signs is decided on will be fine with me.
Thank you.
I had one person comment about, you know, "Well, why do they need to change the sign? There's nothing wrong with the sign." I said, "The sign's 45 years old. We need to update, we need to bring it into the 21st century." "Oh, I didn't realize the sign was that old."
It's from the 70s. If you, if you think of like Route 66 and stuff, that's what was on Route 66 back then.
Val Stratton, unit three. There is talk about this isn't going to cost us anything. Question, once the board adopts this, or accepts this donation, wouldn't it have time to go on the reserve study? And what kind of construction material is this made out of? So, what type of lifespan would it have? Would it be a cost, need repair of 10 years, 50 years?
Good question. This sign would be made out of the same material as the golf course signs that were done like three or four years ago. Dick, maybe you can tell us, what is the lifespan of that, those signs?
I can't tell you, but it's a long time.
Okay, 10 years, 20 years, more than that, more than 10, okay? And right now, in our reserve budget, we do have $5,000. And when they do the reserves, they will see that that's a brand new sign, and probably won't, it'll probably be 25 years, but what they will have to do, what they do with it now, is that there will be something put in the, you know, a couple of pennies in each, in each month for them. But that's what we do now, we already have that now. So, thank you, that was a good question.
Yeah, they're just going to, they're just going to build around, the basic construction here will remain the same. They're just going to add the decorative stonework on the sides, but actually, this is still the original stucco or concrete. But actually, this is still the original stucco or concrete. Taking that roof off, we don't know. Because it's forty-five years old, we don't know if this is solid or vitello. So, uh, that's what, you know, when they get into removing the roof, if this is the one that we go with, that... That is what they're kind of... Kind of run into, so.
It won't be any different, I don't think, than we have now. Because this sign here, they've probably got that value about twenty grand. You know, so I mean, they... There's a value to it because it's in our reserve. So this is probably valued at about twenty grand now. So... And that's maybe something that our treasurer could look out for us. Okay, thank you. Um, okay, wait a minute. I have a hand up first. Petra Dern, Unit 3.
Um, I like the third sign personally because it goes with what... Some signs we already have in the park. And I think keeping it all, kind of all the same lines is nice and rich looking as well. But my question is, and not that makes it illegal beans, but my question is, why can we not take the sign completely down?
Because it's un-county property.
But, I mean, do they not allow you to take?
You cannot... Well, the county will not allow us to demolish the sign. It can only be renovated. And that's...
There are actual codes or anything? Is that what they're saying?
It's probably public codes and stuff, but that is a problem with all of the other contractors that did it. They decided they don't want to mess with that. So yes, that is... This con... That's why I kind of trust this contractor because he got the information. He went and searched. He did more than the others were willing to do. And we know that there were obstacles. And this contractor will be able to work with the county. And we want to make sure of that, too, so it doesn't cost us all that much more money. Uh, another part of our vision is to have, if we end up going with this sign, because it is like a golf course sign, we'd like to put one by the administration building, which has nothing right now that tells you that that's the administration building. We would like to put one up by the clubhouse, up by the, um, the waterfall, the little pond, pond. You know, so... And, uh, so that's kind of part of our vision, too, is to have all the signs throughout the community look... Look the same.
Do you have a timeline of why we'd like to succeed?
Would you like any answers?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, we had decided as a board, when we brought it up at our first meeting in April, that we needed a line item first before we could even start anything. We have to be able to have someplace that we can accept, that we can legally accept donations. At that time, we decided that we would take a full year. April 1st of two thousand and nineteen would be the stopping point. Now, and whatever's in there, then we would decide with that, you know, what we were going to be able to afford. That said, if we should get sixty grand, but... That's not such a... You know? There are people that are willing to, you know, that have been at Brookridge for a long time. I have a gentleman who's been here forty-one years. And he said, "Gail," he said, "If you are short five grand, I'm gonna give you that." So you... We do have people in the park that are that dedicated to this. It'd be nice if somebody just gave us a check for seventy thousand. So just go up another ten thousand. But if we... But whenever we get to a point, say, the beginning of January, and if we have sixty thousand dollars in the coffers, we will have... We will stop that project. And it will just be, uh... Then the art... The contractor would have to be working with the county and that could take up to a couple of months anyway, to get all the permits and stuff, which are very expensive, by the way. So that's where some of that cost is. So we do have... We do have a deadline, but it'd be nice if we got more.
Kathleen Wilson, I'm sorry, I don't know my... What will happen if the contractor gets into working on this and finds that the structure is not sound enough to build upon?
He has already anticipated that within his... He knows... He knows that we can do this. And he is confident enough that we can do this. We just... That's why he said it will be anywhere from two thousand to ten thousand dollars for demolition. Because he can do this, but he doesn't know. And it's... Being able to do it, he didn't say it's either ten thousand dollars or we just can't do it. It's... It's doable, but it could be depending on what is in there, if it's possible to do it. He knows, he has looked at it. He says it is possible to do it, but just how much, he's not sure.
But the structure itself on the original sign is sound enough?
Yes. Yes, it is... It is that, yeah. So that... So the structure itself is fine. We just don't know what's under this to be able to do that.
The roof over the sign has such a dark daunting appearance that to open it up and brighten it up on the third sign just makes more sense. Why do we want another dark dreary sign up there?
It's another opinion. Thank you very much. And that's what I'm saying. Don't be afraid to say yes or no. We want to know what you think because this is a community project. This isn't a board project. This is a community project. And I thank you for that. You've given your reason why you prefer this over that. We've heard... We've heard many reasons tonight. And I've heard different reasons why people want it tonight. So I'm thanking you for all of the opinions that you've given. Lydian?
Bonnie DeRico, Unit 4. The original thing evolved. It would make more sense to have the middle sign, but I'm thinking the cost of maintenance between a roof and a third structure over here, would that make a difference?
Say that again? I just want to make sure. Would the cost of the ma... Would the cost of the maintenance be more here than here? Or this, or this with the roof? Well, the way that this roof is right now, it's been here for forty-five years and there hasn't been any major damage. The contractor has stated that this is a stable, sound structure. So he can... He can... He feels very comfortable doing the work and not having it crumble on us. Because if he felt it was going to crumble on us, he wouldn't be able to do it in the first place because he's at Leebus with a sign and they won't let him demol... He knows he can't demolish that sign. So he's quite comfortable. He has looked at it and he's quite comfortable with... Yes, he can definitely do that. Let me just finish.
Would the cost of maintaining that be more than the maintenance on the third one?
No, absolutely not. There's... The only maintenance we've ever had is painting. The only maintenance we've had is painting. So, wait a minute. Let me just... Just let that hand up first.
I'm Margie Violet, uh, Unit 6. The first sign and the second sign are gonna be very similar, but the lettering on the first sign, the letters get smaller and then bigger again. If it's gonna use the same structure, how would they make the letters bigger? You know what I mean?
Yep.
If you notice, the arch is smaller here than it is here. So they are... This is... This is wider than this. And, you know, we... He has all the dimensions and everything, so he has taken the dimensions. So this is going to be... What I think he's going to do is take some of this and... Do something with the arch or else he's going to shorten his roof a little bit. But that's why the arch... This... This section here is smaller, is larger than that section, so. And then?
Paula Snyder, uh, Unit 4. Um, I think those signs are beautiful, but if we have a beautiful sign out front, is there any plans for the guardhouse?
Yes. Yes. I don't know. I might not be standing here next year, but... Yes, the guard... The guardhouse is pitiful. It's terrible when you come in and you see the guardhouse. And we all know it. Everybody says, "Oh, I just painted it." But it looks terrible. So, yes, um, if we... If we are successful in getting a new sign, the guardhouse is... Seriously, it needs some... It needs a big uplift, yes. A big facelift.
Karen Sage, Unit 4. Uh, if you look at the first, the original sign... Well, first of all, I'd like to take note that what I do have been hearing is the word "community." Brookridge is not a trailer park. If anybody wants to see a trailer park, go down Route nineteen and stop into some of these places. And that first sign, original sign, would fit into those. I'd like either the second or third, the third sign, whichever one we can afford, we have the money for. And it would represent what this community is all about.
Thank you. Thank you.
Elsa, that is up first.
I saw the hands.
Val Stratten, Unit 3. Um, what will be the deciding factor? Are we gonna take a vote or is it just the most money accumulated?
Good question. Uh, we've been contemplating that. And I think the fairest way is, uh... Like I said, this is the first of several town meetings. We will have one again in the fall. And then we will have one probably beginning of December. We'll have a better idea as to how much money and what kind of community support that we have. And then at that time, we will... We will probably make the decision. But I'll tell you folks, if we got... If we put fifty thousand dollars by December 1st, you know what I'm gonna be voting for. But it's just my opinion. Just my opinion and mine. And Linda's too.
Yeah, yeah, Richard, Unit 3. Richard Stratten. Has anybody... Have we contacted the clubs? Fortunately, the men's club is... Do we all... We all know where Pavilion is at? The Pavilion? You know where Pavilion's at? Everybody knows Pavilion's at? Okay. The men's club was involved in that. And we raised over about fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars as quick as we could. But, uh, I mean, there's other... There's other clubs here.
Close to the club. I know I haven't contacted Brookridge.
Right. And then... So I actually just... Well, for the help to get forward, it is the... It's a... It's a men's club that stood up and handled it.
Okay. The... As a matter of fact, uh, some of the clubs have already come to us and said, "What can we donate?" We are going to be, uh... That is... Linda's ad hoc committee that she was looking for another member or two, they are the ones that are going to be dealing with the... With the fundraising. Uh, they will be keeping track every month as to how much has been donated and who's donated. And, uh, there is... They are discussing already to contact all of the... All of the clubs that give a little bit to Brookridge or a lot to Brookridge. Um, I think the women's club... Uh, no, I am sorry. Strike that. I strike that. The Ladies of Brookridge has become... They are going to be a force to be reckoned with. And I think they're gonna give the men's club a run for their money this year. I... I think that... That's right. The challenge is on. The Ladies of Brookridge and the men's club. So people, and the people that are listening at home, uh, the men's club is a great club. The Ladies of Brookridge, we have had so many women come in and have been so happy with how things have progressed. And, um, we've got... Well, we had about forty people the other day and that's not even the snowbirds that left. So we're probably up to about eighty and five, eighty, ninety people already. We would like to see the Ladies of Brookridge. I'd like to see their membership at about two hundred. So the challenge is on.
Frank Matthews, Unit 6. I have just one concern. Do we have a deed-in... Do we have a deed-in right of way for this? Is this something that they can change that road up there and tell us we gotta move it for three years?
No. No. Um, the county is... Is on board with this. We are never going to lose... They can't make it... They can't take that sign away from us. It's been there for forty-five years.
They can't take the land away.
Well, they... Up here, um, you know, once you're... Once you have a property for so many years, it becomes yours by... By right. But now the county...
Yes, they have it... Have it to donate, but I don't think we own the property.
We do not own the property. Uh, but this has been going on since nineteen seventy-three, when Brookridge was first started. The county gave that property to Brookridge. Brookridge will never not have that property. As a matter of fact, a couple... It's kind of interesting. The beautification committee takes care of the flowers and... And the weeding out there. And they had checked years ago with the county and somebody had checked last year also because we had a new chairperson. And we can take care of that property. We can do whatever we want to that property. But we cannot put any, um... Pesticides on there because it's county property. And if we want to have any weeds, stuff, we have to ask the county to come down and do it. So that's why there's a few people that are always out there weeding. So they... We have full rate of it. We just can't put any pesticides on it. Figure it out. But they have a... They know. They... They are quite on board. That's why I said we don't have to worry about the county because, uh, this contractor architect...
I've worked for Mariah for many years. I've had to move lots of telephone poles, so...
Yes.
Just concerned with that.
Well, and I... I think we're... I think we're really safe that way because fifty has been widened to the six lanes. So I... I think we're... I think we're safe that... That they're not gonna come in and...
But it's... But it's good to bring up because people need to be reminded that because that was a question back in February in my room when we were talking. So, yes, thank you.
What might I say? Have we asked the... Richard Stratten again. Have we asked the county, as we had out here a couple of years ago, we bought the property out here for a hundred dollars? We all know that, right? Property ran out of the order?
Yes, it was.
We got property? Why can't we have something to buy the property? Let me go down here.
Good question. I wonder if there's a reason why we can't? You know, we're... We're talking with them about getting more RV land, too. I'm looking for a dollar a year for ninety-nine years.
I think we made a hundred bucks for the one out here, if I'm right? A hundred bucks for the property?
Now, that's because there was something there.
All around it, right?
Yeah, there was something there and they took them out. That was before I came.
And they... You know, that's... That's a strong possibility because if they were to take that piece of land back, what are they gonna do with it? I mean, it's our drive in and out. I mean, all you've got is a little strip of land. So there might be a possibility that they might sell it to us for a dollar or a hundred dollars. We'll look into it.
Looking for a dollar.
Another couple of questions over here?
We've got about ten minutes left.
Oh, no.
Okay.
For a dollar.
You're hoping for the dollar. Okay.
Tom Blake, Unit 6. One possibility for the landscaping might be, uh... As you mentioned earlier, a lot of landscapers come in here. Uh, that might be something that they would be willing to donate to...
Great idea.
Well, yeah, I don't know if you want to do that. I was talking about their name on it, but...
No, they can't put their name on it.
I wish you could get the same thing with a lot of other businesses, so... But that might be one suggestion.
Good. Good point.
We have a lot of landscapers that come in here.
Yeah. Just ladies up first. Jackie McKay. You keep talking about being worried about the county commissioners. You're in six.
six. Are they elected officials, and if so, let's talk to them about their next election?
That's a favorite issue of mine. But tonight is about the sign. August eighteenth, just remember that date, people. Drivers, right here.
Okay. If you're going to ask landscapers, I would think that they would be more ready to give advice or to write up, draw out plans for something that we want to landscape, and then we could possibly buy the plants from them at a wholesale plus cost and have our beautification committee put them in.
And that is something that we are looking at, yeah.
Well, that would help save some money.
Yeah, well, what I'm thinking is, if, if they don't let us do any pesticides or anything, they might make, they might, we might have to have a professional start it. And then he will, it's something that we are looking into, and then they can show that, then the beautification committee can take over.
Now, can you tell them, like, situations that can be used in that case?
Yeah. There's a lot of things that we have to talk about there, but guaranteed, you're not really sick of that lumber and that stone. You know, we wanted to get rid of that, when I was on the beautification committee a couple of years ago, we had talked up to one of the sod places about doing that, putting sod in, and they advised us because of, there is, because of the way the curving is, that all of it would just run off, that we would have to have it professionally redone. So, once it's, once it's done, then we can take over, yeah. Thanks for the comment. Anybody else? Anybody's got any money tonight? We'll take one tonight.
There's still a couple of coffee and donuts left back there. Yes.
How much are they?
The donuts are now five dollars, and coffee is fifteen. Ooh. No, we do want to remind you that when you do make donations, that you bring, if you bring a check, you bring it to Ms. Vivian or send it in. The check has to be written out to the B C P O, the Brookridge Community Property Owners, and very important, most important, well, in the memo, you must say front sign. Because if you do not put anything in that sign, in that memo, it goes into unallocated funds, and we won't know where you want to put it. And we're very, we're very strict with the budget process to make sure everything goes exactly where it's supposed to go.
And if you do bring cash, Ms. Vivian will give you a receipt for it, and note that it's going to the front sign. So we take the cash.
We take that. No credit cards, though.
Yeah, no credit cards.
How's everybody feel? Are you feeling, do you feel like you've gotten more information tonight? More comfortable? Even the ones that were dead set against it, maybe you've got another way of looking at, you know, at it? Or maybe not. I mean, there are people here that have spoken to me and said, there's no way you're going to get this done, we'd like that blue, and that blue will stay until Tuesday. Well, you know, majority rules, that's all I can say. So it's going, this is our first one, good night, I want to thank you. Linda has taken this project on, it's too much for me, and as president, I am not the one that is heading this. Linda was on the beautification committee, and she asked to bring this project on so that we could continue where the other residents have started. And we are looking for at least one other person to be on the ad hoc-
Two other people, yeah, like, you know, yeah, just, it's, it's going to be fun, it's going to be exciting, and, so if I can get another one or two people on the ad hoc committee, that would be awesome.
Yeah, that's awesome. I want to thank you all for coming tonight, and let's see how it, and let's see how it works out. Thank you. Beautiful.